Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council, Thursday, September 8th, 2022, at 6:00 PM. We'll first have a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance to the flag, led by Councilperson Crossan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, can we have Colin in the roll, please? Councilperson Aller.
Present.
Councilperson Azar.
Present.
Councilperson Bowlin. Councilperson Crossan.
Present.
Councilperson Devon. Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garrison.
Here.
Councilperson Loudermilk.
Here.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
Ader present, one is absent. And now's the time, we'll allow up to 30 minutes of time for a public comment on items not on the agenda tonight. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment on something not on the agenda? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Donald Hyde, 1411 Popper Street, Terre Haute, Indiana. Tonight, because it's a budget meeting earlier, I have something I want to talk to you about. I'm going to bring up the same thing you've been wanting to talk about and you've been talking about for the last two years. And that's the tourist business. The problem with the tourist business is you've got to have something people want to see. Now, there's places in America where mass museums have famous works of art from Europe or wherever they were from. And some of the most famous American artists are displayed there, Cock or some of those places. Terre Haute has an art gallery. I've been put, I like it, and everybody should see it. However, they've only got a couple of pieces that really stand out. Now, I bring this up as a comment to the city council, the county council, and the state governor. All of them are wrong. We have, and you have, passed many, passed these rules, made it possible for the training musicians. Right now, you think that only singing or playing an instrument is art. Art originally was your ability to draw, paint, and put in things. Now, what happened to art and what happened to that area? Go back 150 years ago, that was a main subject. You studied, you went to college, you got a degree, you make a living out of it for the rest of your life. And if you're really good, you become a famous artist. Very few people went that way. But here's what my problem is. What I want you to look at is the last five years, no, the last four years. How many art scholarships of any kind have you voted for, put up, decided to put some city money into? Now, the reason I point this out, art, and I, as an artist, I'm actually an expert. One of the few things I could talk about expertly. Art starts at elementary school. Then it goes up to junior high and high school, and finally, college. So there's four different levels of art that you should be trying to encourage. The reason I point this out, right now, you pay money the last three years to do artistic scholarships. You put them out here, and you want people to come and take pictures. I'm going to do pictures every month. But, for the exception of flowers, that's a pile. I love the just off seven to five. Those flowers, they are, at least look like flowers. They're big steels, and they're very, very good, and the best thing you could have. Other things, not so good. Now, here's the problem. How many people live, born in Vigo County, are artists? That can actually go do your, the work you're asking for, you're willing to pay for? Now, you're talking about, and this is what you've been talking about for the last five years I've come off and on, and the last three years for sure, every meeting you talk about it. You want tourism here. Tourism means you make something or put something up that people want to see, they want to take a picture of. You've got to have talent. And I want you guys to look into it, I'm wrapping it up right now. I want you to look up, right now, the last three years, how many artistic, and I'm not talking about music, are playing instruments, I'm talking about art, where they could make something. Those artists, Vigo County, City of Terre Haute kids, and help them become good artists. Now, we had one great artist that came from Vigo County. I didn't say the Terre Haute, I'm sorry, I'm too old to remember his name, but he died years ago.
Bill Wolf.
Huh?
Bill Wolf.
No, that's the other one.
Gilbert Wilson.
Who?
Gilbert Wilson.
No, 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 no.
Salty semen.
There it is. There it is, that's the one. But by the way, by the way, no, no, but here's the thing. The three of you were able to name three artists. Now, if I asked you to name musicians, I'll bet there'd be a whole lot more. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on non-agenda items tonight? Seeing no one else, we're going to move on. Michelle, is there any corrections?
Somebody.
Oh. I'm sorry. No, that's okay, come on up, if you can, there you go.
This isn't on the agenda, but I've been here before.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Vera Kyle, and my address is 1890 Birch Run Road in Terre Haute. Well, as I'm sitting there, I wrote everything down, now I can't find it, so I can just go extemporaneously. Okay. Well, about three or four years ago, about 80 of us showed up here advocating for an all-public access pool through Y Make Waves. And over the last few years, we've received that pool. Thank you for your help. It's here, it's, people are using it. Now, it breaks down an awful lot because it's an older building, but we have a pool. The gentleman before me was talking about things that bring people to the city. One is art, but one is also, we need talent, and the things that people like are amenities that keep them here. And the YMCA and the pool is, is one of them. And I just wanted to say, as VP of Y Make Waves, thank you for your support in more ways than one. Some have given private donations, some have used it, and some have helped us to advocate for it, so thank you. But what I'm here for now is because there's a volunteer group at the Y, besides Y Make Waves, and the volunteer group is kind of meets as the advisory council for the Vigo County YMCA, and I am the president. And one of the things that I'm going to ask you for is I'm soliciting you, and the people that are behind me, it's just easier for me to look one way at a time. And we are, November 5th, are having the Inspiration Gala. And with that, it is a way to inspire the youth in our community, as well as inspire anyone that would look outside themselves to support good things in our community. I'll just leave it like that. And so, the whole day is going to be taken up. We have a speaker named Evan Austin, and Evan is going, is a Paralympic, Paralympic gold medalist that's from this area. And he is going to speak at that banquet. But in addition, that morning, he's going to generate art with over 100 children at the YMCA. They'll make torches out of paper rolls, but nonetheless, to them, it'll be awesome. And so, he'll be participating basically the whole day for our community. And so, I'm hoping that anybody behind me, that can only see my backside, and any of those that are in front of me, would consider to come to the YMCA and offer your donation. It's $50 a person, and if you want a table, I'll just say, the donation can flow. You can do more than, I mean, you pay $500 a seat for yours, I don't, I don't mind. But it's all for the good of our community, to help our community grow, to help talent come here. Because people are always looking, when they come to a new community, the things that are familiar to them. And one of them is the YMCA. And so, thank you for your time, but please consider going by the Y, looking on our website for the YMCA, looking on our Facebook page, and consider buying a ticket for November 5th at the Terre Haute Convention Center. Each of you should have received it as an email invitation to that event, and you'll be seeing more of it. We're also considering giving out awards for people that have inspired those in our community to, to be good citizens, to, to promote healthy living. For me, I didn't have such healthy living earlier on, so now I have to use that thing. But now, I go to swimming, and so I think I do. So, thank you for your time, thank you in front and back, and I'm going to sit down now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak on non-agenda items? If not, we'll close public comment, and Michelle will move on to correction, help correcting the journal proceeding meeting.
There are none.
Communications from the mayor?
I receive none.
Reports from city officials?
I don't believe there are any.
Reports from Board of Public Works on safety?
There are none.
Reports from standing committees?
There are none.
Reports from non-standing committees?
There are none.
Items previously tabled?
General Ordinance 2, 2022, Amending City Code, Chapter 4, Article 19, Section 4-282, Ambulance Medical User Fees Established.
Is there a petitioner here, present?
There is. Mrs. President, members of the city council, Bill Berry, fire chief. First, I want to apologize, last month, I, I couldn't make the meeting. Dad was COVID positive, and even though I've had my shots, I didn't feel like it was a good place for me to come, since I spent the entire day with him. So, I know this has been postponed three times, and hopefully, we can get this taken care of tonight. So, this is a proposal or a recommendation to increase the EMS user fee. I sort of, before I, before I make, tell you what this proposal was, you've seen it, the council's seen it. I just want to sort of tell the general public that, first and foremost, this is absolutely not a tax. This is not a tax, this is an increase in the EMS user fee. In fact, I was part of this when we established this ordinance in 2000 as the Assistant Chief of EMS. So, I helped write the ordinance back then. And so, this ordinance has been in effect for 22 years, and basically, it is a fee for our ambulance service. Over those 22 years, it has saved the taxpayers, it's not a tax, so it's, it's done the opposite. It has saved the taxpayers tens of millions of dollars. And I'll just give you some examples of that. We have a rotation of the items that the EMS user fee is used for. Mainly, it was instrument, or implemented to be used for buying apparatus, buying personal protective gear, meaning our fire gear, and then buying medical supplies. It's been amended a few times, and now I have an EMS budget, part of the six budgets that I take care of for the fire department. This is one of the non-reverting budgets. So, over the last 22 years, we've had three rounds of fire engines bought for every firehouse on the, in the fire, in, in the city. We have eight firehouses, so that's 24 engines, and we've had three rounds of ladder trucks bought over that same, same period of time. Actually, two, I'm sorry, I'm getting ready to go to the Board of Public Works for the third one. A fire engine today is $600,000. So, you take $600,000 times 24, and you're looking at millions of dollars that the taxpayers have not had to spend, just money that the EMS user fee has generated. It also takes care of my EMS budget, which pertains, items in there is medical supplies that we use on a daily basis, upkeep for our ambulances, fuel, maintenance, anything pertaining to EMS. So, this has honestly saved the taxpayers numerous, millions of dollars over the, over this last 22 years. During that time, we've only had two increases. In 2000, we implemented it, in 2009, we had a nine percent, no, a 28% increase. In 2013, we had a 9% increase, and this increase that I'm presenting tonight is roughly a 15% increase. And it just basically hits the four main line items that we are, we bill through our billing company, which is AccuMed. And those four line items are BLS transport, ALS I transport, ALS II transport, and non-transporting medical runs. So, with that being said, tonight, I'm looking for, I'm presenting this to you, and basically, those four line items, we are, we are recommending an increase of $100 each. And then, I believe that you would be in agreement that our non-city resident, our non-residents outside the city of Terre Haute are charged a little bit more. We've always charged $100 on top of that, we're, we are wanting to increase that to $250. So, that's the recommendation and the proposal. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment?
On this one, I have no choice. First of all, you gave a good speech. However, you left out some facts that I think I'd like to hear, and the public out here listening would like to hear, and the people watching this on the TV that they're watching would like to hear. What does it cost right now, if, if right now, I, you, or anybody in this room would fall down, ambulance was pulled up and took them to the hospital? To this day, what would it cost that person to get a ride to the hospital by what you've got going right now?
Okay. Well, you know, I can get as technical as anybody wants me to, and I've lived this for 22 years. So, Don, to answer your question, it just depends on what type of insurance, Medicare, Medicaid, anything like that. If you were on Medicare or Medicaid, you're not going to have to pay anything. Because Medicare, Medicaid, and Blue Cross Blue Shield, Umano, all of that is an allocated rate. So, no matter, I can charge $25,000 to Kevin to pick you up off the floor, but if you have Medicare, Medicare is going to pay us $447, and that's what we're going to get. The rest of it's going to be written off, you'll never see a bill. So, depending on who the person is, depending on what type of a run it is, depending on where it happens, is, you know, determines the fee. Our fees are, we only have four that we charge for on a daily basis. We have numerous line items with AccuMed, but we don't use any of those. Some of those, most of those pertain to convalescent or non, or transfers and, and stuff that private ambulance companies do, and we do not do any of that, we just do 911 calls. So, like I just said earlier, our four main things that we bill for is a BLS run. That would be you falling here and no ALS interventions is, is needed. ALS I would be an ALS primary survey, and then one ALS treat, one ALS treatment, meaning giving a medication or starting an IV or something like that. An ALS II would be a treat, or doing an ALS survey on the patient, and then doing three different rounds of medication and one ALS procedure. So, every single one of our members of the Terre Haute Fire Department are paramedics that are on the, numerous guys, guys and women, men and women on the job that are on the engines are also paramedics. So, you're always going to have the highest level of care, no matter what. So, there's numerous, there's numerous ways that, or a couple ways we bill, but depending on who the person is and what they have, it's what they may or may not pay. So, there would be very few, if, you know, basically, 46% of our business in Terre Haute, Indiana is Medicare patients. So, we get from Medicare 440, it's roughly $445 per run. And the patient doesn't have to pay anything because they have Medicare.
You did answer very well one of my questions, and you took probably 90% of the wind out of my sails. However, with that said, I'll play devil's advocate again. You said one quarter of them are Medicaid. And by the way, that was my number one worry, and why I wanted to know how much it costs for an ambulance ride, because the higher you take that trip money-wise, somebody's got to pay it. Then, the people on low income, the social security people, people on fixed income, they're going to have a harder and harder time to pay it. That was my point. Well, you've answered most of that, 90% of it. However, there's still people that would be working and have insurance. Now, how is that covered? And do they pay, how much do they pay on that?
It's the same, it's the same thing, Don. So, insurance and Blue Cross Blue Shield, there's allocated rates with all of them, and then they would get a bill for the balance. A lot of our patients, a lot of patients pay them, some of them don't. You know, we, by state, by law, we have, we have a billing company. That billing company will bill them multiple times, and then if they don't pay, they have to send them to a collection agency. They can always contact the Board of Public Works, and, and if they have issues or hardships or something like that, and Board of Public Works gets them numerous, numerous ones each month, and we're not here to hurt anybody, we're here to try and help people. And I believe the Board of Public Works is the-
I think it's very clear, I agree, 100%.
Okay.
Mr. Hyde.
Mr. Hyde.
Okay. I'll be happy to answer any other questions, if not.
Is there anyone else?
I think.
I need to tell who I am and all of that, or I don't have to worry about that right now. I do?
Yeah.
Don't, do, don't, okay. Tess Stevens, and what else am I supposed to say?
Your address, please.
Oh, 2004 North 21st Street, 47804. That's all good? Okay. All right, so, I think I was listening fairly well. You said how much the insurance pays, but you didn't say how much the fee is. So, how much is the fee for each one of those services?
Okay, I got that right here. I, I think I over-prepared, but maybe I didn't. So, as far as, let me get these out here for you real quick. What we currently charge is, we currently charge $450 for a BL-
Yeah, well.
Yep. No, $550 for a BLS run.
That's the change.
Is that the change?
It's $450 for BLS.
Okay, $450 for a BLS run, and $650 for ALS I, and $750 for ALS II. Okay, $550, I'm sorry. $450, $550, $750. That's what I needed. Thank you, Michelle. BLS run is $450. ALS run I, ALS Level I is $550. ALS Level II is $750. And our recommendation is increasing those $100 each. And that $100 each, still, I understand this is our community, this is Terre Haute, but still, is cheaper than 90% of the fire departments that have fire-based EMS in the state. We have some, Greenfield, Indiana, just for example, is 1500, 1700, and 2200. Plainfield is 1000, 1482, and 1976. Some that are close to us, Hammond, they're $650, $850, and they don't do ALS Level II. So, you know, I, I have a feed, main feed with all of the fire chiefs in the state of Indiana, so we all sort of talk and communicate, so I get all these current numbers from all the other cities and, and departments across the state, and I've got about 15 of them here. And like I said, there's, there's some copies up here if anybody wants any, by the way. But they are all, even with our recommended increases, we are still at the very bottom. We're very, very, one of the very cheapest ambulance services in the state of Indiana.
Do you want to ask a very quick question?
She's only, she's only important.
Tell me the answer.
Now, you increase in one of these are being increased by 250.
If you get a bill, I fall down and get the bill, because let's say I'm not Donald Hyde, I'm somebody else that has got work for eleven. Do you make it possible for them to make payments to pay off the bill?
So, after, after you, after we take you on an ambulance run, we have nothing to do with the bill anymore. We send it to our billing company, which is AccuMed, they take care of all of our bills. So, you would be able to contact, you would get a bill from AccuMed. And then, there's a contact number there with AccuMed that you could contact them and make payment plans or whatever needed to be done.
But you, I don't mean just made it, I mean just personally, you're the head of the fire department, right?
Don. Don, we're not going to sit and debate from the gallery to the chief. If you want to speak, you need to come up, but it would be good to give someone else from the public to speak.
I, I did have one more question.
That's fine, go ahead, Tess.
I just wanted to make sure that I understand this correctly. So, am I to understand that this asterisk parentheses, whatever you want to call it, that this agenda item is sponsored on the agenda by Councilman Aller? Is that what that means, what it says at the end? And it's in, is that what that means?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I guess you know my name, Vera Kyle, 1890, Birch Run Road. I just have a question. You mentioned a lot how much the fee is and how much they pay, but how much does it cost? Because that's not really saying how much it costs. If they pay it, we're still paying it in a one way or the other. I want to know, how much does it actually cost?
How much does it, what do you mean, how much does the run cost?
Yeah, you're charging $450, you want to raise it to another 100, but how much does it actually cost?
Well-
Does it cost a thousand, and you're charging $450, because that's what they agreed to?
No, so, that, that, that I could, I could go on forever. It just depends what type of run it is. I mean, some of our medications cost 17 cents, and some medications cost $450 each. So, you know, it depends on what type of run. Obviously, some runs supplement other runs. So, we could have some runs that really doesn't cost us a whole lot, other than a transport to the hospital and a comfortable transport to the hospital with paramedics that are taking care of you. You know, I'm not going to sit here and BS anybody. I mean, there could be times where not a lot of treatment has taken place. Numerous times, we have a lot of treatment taking place. A cardiac arrest, for example, we're in the hole. This is, I've got my EMS chief here, Kevin Cool. He has been a paramedic for over 35 years, he's worked on the fire department for over 20, and he also has worked in the private industry. So, he's the one that takes care of buying all the supplies, taking care of doing all of the peer reviews for our runs and everything. So, every run is different, depending on what we use on that patient. Just an example would be a cardiac arrest. A cardiac arrest, we're in the hole. I mean, completely in the hole, and we'll never even transport them. If they happen to die, we'll never even transport it. But all of the equipment we use for that cardiac arrest is going to be $500, $600, and we'll never see a bill from them. We'll ne, we'll never get repaid, because we just, we don't do that. So, you know-
So, the increase is just covering, I mean, it's not crossface, what is it?
It's, increase is covering overall, the, the drastic increase in the cost of supplies, fuel, everything. It, it's no different than, I mean-
We're all living this. I mean, it's no different than the inflation we're dealing with today.
Everything is increasing. So, for us to increase this, we'll be able to, on a little bit of our runs, recuperate some of our costs. And it will continue to make the fire department EMS fund a self-sufficient fund for operating costs for the Terre Haute Fire Department, whereas it doesn't come out and go up hot. You know, before 2000, every bit, every time we needed an apparatus or something, we came up here. In fact, I came on in 1993, I'll just tell you, 1993 to 2000, we never had a brand-new fire engine. We were in 1977, old E1s, we're getting hand-me-down fire gear, stuff like that. Now, you have the best, best- Now, you have the best, best, best get it fitted firefighters and their PPE, the best equipment, they're not going to break down on the way to a run, ambulances aren't going to break down on the way to one of your loved ones getting hurt. You know, our guys and men and women are safe, which is my ultimate goal. So, the cost that's incurred that we are spending, and, you know, I'm planting a seed here because I'm already, over my budget in medical supplies for the year, so that just tells you, I will probably come and see you next month or the month after for an appropriation. So, with the increase in medical supplies and increase in fuel, our ambulances make ten thousand nine hundred runs a year, roughly eleven thousand runs a year between three ambulances. So, the wear and tear on them, I need to buy ambulances. The fuel, the increase in medical supplies, that's the reason we need to come forward and increase this. And this, again, this isn't an increase from property taxes, this is an increase out of the non-reverting EMS user fee that is only funded when somebody uses it, not by taxpayers.
Tess, can you come up to the podium, please? It needs to be recorded.
You mentioned medications. So, the medication, you guys have a medication budget? The, all the medicines that you stock comes out of the pharmacy, I mean, out of the fire department budget and not out of a larger medical budget like with a hospital or what happened?
Yeah, that's correct. So, we would get, medical supplies, medications are included in medical supplies. In fact, we've had to go above and beyond because now we have to have a DEA license for the fire department because we hold narcotics.
Right.
And we have to buy narcotics. So, you know, Chief Cool here?
I work at pharmacies, I'm familiar.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that I know what medication costs.
Yep, yep.
I just wanted to make sure that I heard you correctly, that comes out of here.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Tess.
And by the way, I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you, Tess. Thank you. Any other questions from the council? I'll be happy to answer anything, if I can.
Anyone else from the public? Counsel?
Madam President.
Counselperson Nation.
Chief, I live in the same world you do, I totally get it. I, I read everything that you gave us and this all makes sense to me. If there's no further discussion, I move that we vote to take, I'm sorry, we don't have to do that. I move for approval of General Ordinance Number Two, twenty twenty-two.
Second. An emotion made by Counselperson Nation, second by Counselperson Haller, to approve General Ordinance Two, twenty twenty-two. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, chief. Oh, you didn't enter, you want to introduce Chief Cool to everyone?
I missed that.
We were trying to get you up here to talk. Michelle, next item on the agenda?
Appropriation Seventeen, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars from Edit Number Zero Four Zero Four Zero Zero Nine Six. To demolish safe buildings, Number Zero Four Zero Four Zero Zero Nine Six, zero three four three two zero one eight. As a reminder, appropriations Seventeen and Eighteen, we'll need a motion to take action.
Thank you.
President Loudermuth, members of the council. Phil Kestner with the Department of Redevelopment. These appropriations represent liens that were repaid to the department that were deposited in the controller's office in order to utilize them for unsafe structures that need to be transferred to the proper line item.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Anyone from the council? Madam President? Counselperson Crossen.
This is in the normal course of business for our demolition program, I think, is that correct?
Yes.
That being the case, if there's no other questions from council, I move that we vote to vote on both Appropriations Seventeen and Eighteen.
Second. An emotion made by Counselperson Crossen, second by Counselperson Nation, to take action on Appropriations Seventeen and Eighteen, twenty twenty-two. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Madam President, if there's no further questions about Appropriation Seventeen, I move that we approve Appropriation Seventeen, twenty twenty-two.
Second. An emotion made by Counselperson Crossen, second by Counselperson Haller.
I was waiting, I thought Tom was going.
To approve Appropriations Seventeen, twenty twenty-two. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. You can get the next one. Next item on the agenda, Michelle?
Appropriation Eighteen, two thousand twenty-two, seven thousand five hundred and eighty dollars from Edit Number Zero Four Zero Four Zero Zero Nine Six. To demolish safe buildings, Number Zero Four Zero Four Zero Zero Nine Six, zero three four three two zero one eight.
Phil, would you like to speak on that?
It's the same, it's, it's another repayment that we received a few days later, so they had to go in separately, but it's to be put back in the account. And there's a hearing that's, I think bids are going out soon for more structures.
Thank you. Anyone from the public? If not, anyone from the council?
Madam President.
Counselperson Garrison.
Bill, are we on track to reach about sixty again this year?
Between fifty and sixty, yes. It just depends on what the costs come in. Some of the larger, the two-story that are close to houses will have a higher cost than, you know, the smaller homes.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, I move for approval of Appropriation Eighteen, twenty twenty-two.
Second. An emotion made by Counselperson Garrison, second by Counselperson Crossen, to approve Appropriation Eighteen, twenty twenty-two. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Michelle?
General Ordinance Three, twenty twenty-two, amending City Code, Chapter Eight, Article One, Section Eight dash twenty-one, specific one-way street designation, Schedule E, and Section Eight dash thirty-four, specific maximum speeds established, Schedule J, relating to Twenty-seventh Street from Wilson Street to Oak Street. You must vote to take action on General Ordinance Three and you have a proposed amendment in front of you.
Is there a petitioner here? Counselperson Haller, would you like to say something first?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think the petitioner's present, so I'll touch, just touch base on this. I was originally contacted and they were wanting to see about making this street a one-way street and doing a speed limit change. So, I had the city attorney draft that. Since then, we've had neighborhood meetings with the neighborhoods and have went over things out there. So, I have in front of you a proposed amendment which takes out the one-way part of the street and just has the speed limit change in there of twenty-five miles per hour, which I don't know, I'm sure some of you have been out there, you're lucky if you can get up to So, with that proposed amendment in front of you, I do want to touch base because I know it was brought up earlier, I know it was brought up in the meeting that I had with the Wilson Neighborhood Group. And there's a lot of people that don't understand how us as a council operate. Anything that comes before the council needs a council sponsor. That doesn't mean that that person's for it, against it, that just means that they have to have a council sponsor in order to come before the council. And me as a council member, I have said this since day one, I will never deny anybody from not signing anything for them to come before the council because I feel that it's right for the people and the citizens of our town to come before us. So, I know we had that discussion a little bit in the neighborhood meeting, so I was just touching on that.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on General Ordinance Three, twenty Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Nathaniel Bashaw and I own the house at twenty-six forty-two with my girlfriend. And I am just here simply with a hope that Twenty-seventh Street can be made more safe for our two-year-old son and also all the neighbors that I've met, riding their bike, walking their dog down that one-way street or that street. So, our hopes are turning it into a one-way to make it more safe. There is a blind spot on the south end, I guess, heading from Oak towards Wilson where there are hedges. And basically, when you get to the stop sign, you cannot see to the left correctly. So, we think making it a one-way from Wilson to Oak would eliminate that. And I think just that kind of small change would make a significant impact for our family and also all the wonderful families that I've met along the way, living there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public?
My name is Donald Wayne Hyde, fourteen eleven Crawford Street. I lived in Terre Haute, Indiana my entire life. I do know where this is. This is a very nice community, a very nice community for that matter. Why you would want to make a one-way street that only would go about the equivalent of three to four blocks as a one-way street? I, I don't get that. I, I'm totally against that. I would think that more along the lines of signing, especially if you say there's a blind spot, put some signs up and say, hey, drivers, watch out, there's a blind spot, pay attention. Something like that would be more effective than a one-way street. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public?
Good evening. My name's Kathy Frakes. I live at twenty-seven twenty-four Wilson Drive. I'm the lead of our neighborhood watch group, Wilson Watch, that was organized over five years ago. This evening, I speak to you from two perspectives. As a homeowner on Wilson, I'm opposed to making Twenty-seventh Street one-way in either direction. Over the past twenty-five years, my husband Rodney and I have used it as motorists, bicyclists, and pedestrians, northbound as well as safebound. And we found it to be very safe to do that over that time span. However, we have no opposition to a posted twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. That's fine with us. Also, as the lead of our neighborhood watch group, I receive feedback from dozens of neighbors who oppose changing Twenty-seventh to one-way. Several have commented that this portion of Twenty-seventh has been a viable public thoroughfare in both directions for many years and it should remain so. We have two of those neighbors plus one former neighbor who has compiled traffic data for us here this evening who would like to address the council.
Hi, I'm Sean Harmon. I'm a resident at eleven East Wedgway Drive, so, not in the neighborhood, but I'm a former resident of the neighborhood. I'm a senior solution architect with Invista, it's a supply chain consulting company out of Carmel, Indiana. Neighborhood had reached out to me about conducting a traffic and activity study. So, essentially what we did was, you know, one of the neighbors that's, lives on the street that's in question, we placed a ring stick-up camera, a leak, or vent-based traffic. We started the traffic study around the evening of July fourth and concluded it on July twenty-seventh. Had a lot of different data points that we, that we collected, ranging from driving activities, walking activities, you know, running counts of, you know, adults serve, children serve, it's pets, make of, you know, the, the traffic vehicle or traffic that's, that's going on for the, for the area. Timestamping everything and then, you know, I've compiled the, the results of that study for you today. Essentially, the, the ordinance that was put forward, you know, if you compare it to the, the data that I've, that I've collected and the results I've put together, the, the majority of the traffic, you know, from a vehicle standpoint, does not support a one-way northbound. You know, as you see in the recommendations section, the overwhelming majority of the vehicle traffic is actually southbound. So, if you were to consider doing a southbound one-way, you've actually got property owners that, you know, have garages and carports, et cetera, that would no longer be able to use it. So, you, you kind of run into a, an instance where you're not really, you know, satisfying anybody. You know, the, the recommendations that I had, you know, kind of put forward that, you know, would, would address any kind of, you know, safety issues, would essentially amount to, you know, appropriate signage, you know, the, the blind spot that's kind of in question, you know, looked at, you know, other kind of, you know, codes that are out there and, you know, having, you know, appropriate markings on the curb for, for vehicle parking to make sure that, you know, appropriate visibility is, is present at those intersections would definitely create any kind of, you know, safety concern. You know, objectively speaking, I don't have anything that was measuring speed of any cars, but if you've been to it, you know, you're not really going to get up to speed. So, you know, from a subjective standpoint, I didn't observe any kind of like unsafe activity or anything of that nature. But yeah, you're free to, you know, read through the study of the copy I've given you or if you've got any other further questions, you feel free to reach out. Any questions?
Counsel, have any questions regarding the study?
Just one quick comment. It's a really good study, there's a lot of data there. Thank you for compiling it and giving it to us. It's compelling.
Yep, you're welcome. Anything else?
Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak? I was going to say, Mr. Hyde.
I know.
Well, you've already spoken on this and I think we have other people that are still wanting to speak on it.
Good evening. I'm Maryad Baker and myself, my husband Jim, have been homeowners at twenty-seven ten Wilson Drive for almost thirty-six years. I'm here representing the homeowners in the neighborhood who are opposed to the passage of General Ordinance Three, twenty twenty-two, amending the City Code, Chapter Eight, Article One, Section Eight twenty-one, changing Twenty-seventh Street between Wilson and Oak to a one-way street. We do not oppose the change to the speed limit, Section Eight thirty-four. We have presented the petition, which I believe Michelle handed out to all of you, thank you, with over one hundred names of homeowners in the neighborhood stating, excuse me, our opposition to the change of Twenty-seventh Street from a two-way to a one-way street. Twenty-seventh is not a raceway. Cars go slowly because they are aware that it is a short street and the drivers watch for other cars, bicycles, and walkers coming in the opposite direction they are driving. It is not a new street, it has been in existence for at least, since, at least since nineteen forty, eighty-two years ago, when it was shown on the plaque for the Cedar Ridge subdivision. The proposed change to Twenty-seventh Street would cause a great inconvenience to those who, who do reside in the neighborhood. I want to thank you for your time and your consideration of a nay vote this evening on this ordinance.
Thank you. There's still someone else, Mr. Hyde?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm speaking again.
My name's Trevor Drier, I live at twenty-seven fifteen Crawford. I live there with my wife and two children. We use this road often. Usually as pedestrians go to Baseler's Meadows, the church over there, go to the playground. And it's just more than just going there, it is lovely to see all of our neighbors out and I, I don't know, maybe a little un-humble here, I have very cute children and I'm sure they enjoy seeing us out, walking there. I feel like, you know, in a kind of a post-pandemic where we were all kind of shuttered in, it's really lovely and we value these walks more than ever and I would hate to have that limited in any way. The one-way, it's not a huge issue to me per se, living on Crawford and mostly walking, but the original ordinance was for shutting it down completely, which was heartbreaking the idea of that. And I'm afraid that it'll be a lot easier in two, three, four years, different council, different neighbors there, to shut down a one-way than a two-way. It's a slippery slope. And I also want to speak as the city animal control officer. I drive these streets, all the streets in this town, there's so many streets just like this, even on Twenty-seventh from Prinklin to Buttonham, one-ways. And I feel like I don't have a lot of emergency situations, there's a lot of situations where having that much access to places to go by turning these into one-ways, possibly closing them, just making it harder to get around this town is just not a way to go. So, thank you.
Thank you, Trevor. Thank you. Anyone else from the neighborhood or public that'd like to speak? Come on up, ma'am.
I need to ask my name again, I mean, say my name again, yes, please.
Tess Stevens, two, for North Twenty-first Street. I just had a quick question. So, does this call down that, that street or is it, I couldn't re- bus come down that street? Or is it, I couldn't remember. I know there's like a little stop around there somewhere.
Those school buses never come down that street because we walk to either Devaney or Wilson. We're too close to school buses.
I was thinking of the South High School, yeah, the high school. Because I used to pick up a little girl that went to South, and I was just wondering if the school bus was...
29th and Oak is worse.
29th and Oak, okay, yeah. Because that was my question, because I didn't know if making it a one-way would interfere with the school bus route. So I just...
School buses on Wilson, no.
Yeah, he said 29th.
Hi, I'm Cassidy Wood, and I also live at 2642. I am in support of the one-way. Originally, I was in support of it because of my various safety issues with the road. But because this was so upsetting to so many of the people that live on the street, I really did try everything possible to try to figure out what we could do to come to the middle that would make the road safer, but then also address some of the safety concerns. And I went to a neighborhood meeting, and nobody could give me any good suggestions on what could make it safer. What I heard was they just were not into change. They didn't want to change the road, but it was kind of like, I hadn't lived there that long. My opinion wasn't really valid. I am open to hearing any of your opinion on how it could be made safer if you guys don't agree with the one-way, but this directly affects my family and my family only. It doesn't affect people that walk down the road from the side. It affects my family because we live right there. I do want to say a couple of things I had written down. Okay, so, the next-door neighbor who resides at 2700 Wilson Drive, on the edge of her property, there is a species of honeysuckle that lines the road, that lines the road, which makes it difficult, or extends past the stop sign. So this makes it difficult for pedestrians and vehicles traveling down 27th Street to see oncoming traffic. What these people don't see is, when I'm sitting in my living room, these people are constantly blowing the stop sign. And I don't know if it's because the honeysuckle's blocking their view, but that also, but that also creates a safety issue with pedestrians trying to walk down the sidewalk as well. The neighbor did attempt to cut back the honeysuckle, but I don't believe that it's sufficient enough to be able to have a clear view towards the left. And then we've, yeah, they've run the stop sign. Another safety concern that I have is that the road is not wide enough to fit a pedestrian and a car on it at the same time. There is no reason that this road should be a two-way anyways, because it, in public record, it's 15 feet, but I went out and measured it in five different spots, and it ranges from nine to 11 feet. So if a pedestrian and a car and another car are coming down, there's nowhere for them to step off until it's on my property on the left side, because there's brush of honeysuckle on the other side that are preventing people from stepping on the green space. So, the honeysuckle is definitely an issue, but then also because the street is so close to my house, it makes it difficult for a vehicle traveling down southwards if my child or anybody else running into the street, for them to be able to stop. Someone made a comment earlier about how you cannot get up to 30 miles per hour on that road. Yes, you absolutely can, because we have tested it out, and you can go down 30 miles per hour on this road. There is no reason why a vehicle should be able to go back and forth on this road in general, not because of its size, but if you're on, to be able to get to the road in general, you have to go from 25th, or you have to come from 29th Street. And so, if you live on Wilson, you're going to turn down 25th on Wilson. You're not going to turn down 25th to Oak just to come down this street to get back onto Wilson. That's not, you know, that wouldn't happen. Same deal on the other side of 29th Street. If you're driving from Baslers and you go down 29th Street, you're going to either take Crawford to Wilson Drive, onto Wilson Street, or you're going to take Crawford down to Wilson. Anybody that says that they take this road to go to Baslers, they're either cutting through the Memorial Church parking lot, or they're just cutting down 29th over to Oak to get to Wilson. But there's really no reason, because they can get to their streets without any blocking. There's no way that they wouldn't be able to get to their appropriate streets. I know that the data showed that there's more cars utilizing the road southbound, but that's my whole issue. Because there's more traffic heading down south, that's where my problem lies, is that because it's heavily trafficked down south, that's where the two blind spots are, and it would make my family feel so much safer if you guys would please consider this. We haven't been homeowners long. I know the road's been there for a long time. But also, I think you guys are aware that the road has been vacated several times within the past 30 years. So it was originally a 50-foot wide road, and then they vacated it, and then supposedly there was supposed to be 15 feet left from there. So this isn't anything that's new or being thrown at these people that have lived here, because it has happened in the past. Just because I've lived here for only eight months, or however long I've lived there, I don't feel like my opinion or my voice shouldn't be heard. Because at the end of the day, I'm not going to apologize for trying to do what I think is best for my family, which is a safety issue. I'm not going to apologize for that. And I'm not going to feel, as a pregnant woman, feel bullied by some of these people that are walking down the street. So I would really appreciate it if you guys could really consider this. This could be a huge impact for my family. Thank you.
I have to speak to the honeysuckle issue here. Honeysuckle was said a lot tonight. I'm going to say it a few more times. I work out the code enforcement office as an animal control officer. Code enforcement officers have driven to this site many times. We have issues called site prisms. They check those. We send it to the street department to cut. There is no site prism issue there, by the way. So I just wanted that to be very clear.
Thank you. Is anyone else that's not spoke?
Your name is...
That's okay. You got your time, because you've got one coming up.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Wood. I live at 5538 South Ernest Street. As you can tell, that's way outside of this district. I do have a very valuable reason for having a concern, though, because it is my grandson that lives at this home. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. This is very emotional to our family, because of all the people here and of all the hundred signatures that you have, there's only our family and one other person that I see that is directly impacted by the, living on the 27th Street, on the Wilson and Oak. As my daughter stated, that road is extremely narrow. I think she emailed a picture. I don't know if there was time for everyone to look. I brought a photo. I don't know if you can see here, but basically, it is a very narrow, narrow street. I applaud my daughter's actions in trying to do everything she could to resolve this issue. I took a day off work, and we both met with the city engineer office one afternoon. And basically, when she had talked about vacating the road, and she didn't want to upset the neighbors, we brainstormed with them. Can this be a walking path? Could this be one-way? And different ways that we might be able to come to some kind of conclusion to make it safer for all. I originally thought my daughter would be cheered for trying to make it safer one-way or for all, because it seemed like most of the people were walkers and, you know, in the spirit of a good neighborhood, out community, talking with one another and that. And I thought, as long as it was safe for everyone, everyone would agree. However, I'm starting to understand that because there's not been an accident or fatality, we can't seem to get anyone's attention. She's actually asked many people, hey, do you have a real, when I say that, I'm not comparing it to 25th Street or anything like that, but it only takes one car. And if you were to get in that car, as you can kind of see, is the closer you get to that house, if there was an animal that shot out in front of that house, or a two-year-old child, or getting out of the car, there's just not a lot of time to react. And I think that because of that, I think we should maybe take a look at that and just see what we can do to make it safer. I, basically, I'm a little bit disappointed in the ability to work through this, because I thought as a neighborhood group, we might be able to do that. But honestly, it does seem to be falling on deaf ears. So, we're going to have to bring this to you, and just hopefully, in your wisdom, you can give us an idea of what the best way to go forward with this is. The one thing I want to say is that I disagree with the fact that because if it's one-way, that it's going to be vacated at a future point. I don't think that's the right way to look at something, because I think what we're talking about is what's going on in the present right now. And I think that basically, knowing that there is a two-year-old that's living in the house on the corner, that maybe that's what we should have in mind, instead of the people that are the hundred signatures that are potentially blocks away that really are not directly impacted. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, do you want to come up?
One more quick thing, because we heard from the city code or the code officer. I'd like to hear maybe from the city engineer about what he thinks about it being a two-way versus a one-way. Would you be, would you be able to give your opinion on if two cars can...
We can do that in a minute. Let's let this... Marcus, can you go ahead and let her, this one, speak first, and then we'll have you come up.
My name is Jewel Mason. I'm from, I live at 2871 Oak Street. Excuse me. One of the things about closing 27, I've never drove to it too much, but I walk there a lot. But one thing about 27th, too, is a way to get between Oak and Wilson. The other two alternatives are 25th Street and 29th. I don't know if any of you are aware of 29th Street, the situation there. I live two doors up from 29th. And I might add, on the corner, there are four children living on the corner of 29th and Oak Street. And they have fences, and they just watch the kids. But the thing is, when you set this, if you shut down 27th, you're going to put some traffic off on 29th. 29th is very wicked, especially between Crawford and Oak, because of the way the terrain is. On the one side, you can't hardly get out of the way if you're walking and that. And like, kids on bicycles and that, setting more traffic on the 29th, especially children, is not a good alternative, if I can tell you, because they do, you talk about run stop signs. In fact, when I asked one person, they wanted to read the, one designing a petition, it was pointed towards 29th. And I said, yeah. If they want to see bad situation, you'd look at 29th Street. And that would be one of the alternatives, if you shut down 27th, if some of the traffic going between.
Did you still want to speak, ma'am?
I was.
I just wanted... We could have done that. Amy could have done that.
I'm Mary Jo Wilson, Jo Wilson, Wilson's a Wilson. 2522 Wilson Street. I've written all of you, so I'll probably just be saying the very same things I said in my letter to you, which was, when we moved into the neighborhood back in the 70s, we were the young people without kids who moved into a well-established neighborhood. And I don't know if you remember Dr. Shike, but he was our next-door neighbor, and I remember him saying something to the effect of, this is a very friendly neighborhood, everybody's very nice and all that, but we're not intrusive. So I thought, oh, God, what does that mean? But I learned to live by it and understand it and accept it, and it's still that way. This is such a good neighborhood. We then raised three kids. We even added on to our house, because it's such a wonderful area. But 27th Street was that way when we moved there. We've had kids grow up in that neighborhood all these years, and luckily, like she said, there has not been an accident. That would be awful. But people come and go. We use 27th all the time. It's always been that narrow street. We always have that, oh, you came in first, I'll back out. I've witnessed that and been part of that for years. As far as the safety issue, I, I think sometimes, I've got a quote that I look at sometimes that says, when you worry about safety too much and give up all your freedoms, you know, you've got to be careful about that. Making everything too safe is not necessarily what you want to do. You would never have anything going on. I'm all for safety, but I think the neighborhood just is really needing 27th to stay the way it is. If Rick were here, my husband, he goes up and down that street all the time. We use it a lot even to go to, like, Baslers. You know, I'm sorry, we'd go up and go, and then maybe we are taking a funny route, but we use it all the time. Anyway, thank you, and I hope you don't pass it. So, there you go.
By the way, the reason I want to say a second thing is, during this whole conversation, I've learned many things and saw a few that you didn't know in the beginning. First of all, based on what I'm hearing, is there a sidewalk anywhere on 27th Street, either side? Is there a sidewalk? Or is it simply a street, and that's why you walk in the street? I don't know. You need to find out. Do you have the job...
We know. We know. There's no sidewalk.
All right, so there's no sidewalks?
No.
All right, then, there is one thing the city council can do to fix the problem, and I'm afraid that's the only way to, that's the only way to fix the problem. You have, the city council of all United States has the power to designate what the land is used for. In other words, you could take over a part of a land and claim it for the city, and put a sidewalk on both sides, or at least one side of one of those streets, and that would fix your problem. And by the way, I'd vote down it being a one-way street, no matter what. Thank you.
Marcus, would you like to come up and maybe, since we did tell her that we'd ask you to speak?
Good evening. Marcus Meyer, City Engineer. So I've met with both sides of this group, and I've been out and looked at the roadway. I assume several of you have too. It's a 15-foot public right-of-way with a road that varies in width, but it's no wider than 12 feet. We, as an engineer and the traffic section, just looking at roadway geometry, I would personally go with the recommendation of one-way, as there's not room for two cars to pass safely. I know, I'm not familiar with any incidents in the past history of this where there've been problems. My recommendation would be solely based on roadway width. I really doubt two cars could pass here and even stay off of private property. And I understand that it currently backs out, as, you know, in transportation engineering, we can't recommend it safe into a street. You know, there's currently city codes against parking spots that back into the public right-of-way. This is a similar scenario. So I, you know, the only other alternative I could think of, first I'll touch on, you know, I don't, you guys vacate the streets. It takes city council action. Changing it to one-way, I wouldn't see change in any form. Public right-of-way is public right-of-way. It goes through the same process, whether it's a one-way street, two-way street, alley. People still have the chance to remonstrate with the exact same, it provides the same benefit. It would be access to the property. The only alternative suggestion I could potentially think of would be if it were designated an alley, that would automatically reduce the speed limit to 15 mile per hour, per city speed rule. The street signs could come down, so you may not have the people wondering, make the wrong turn, see a green sign, think it's, you know, the people outside of the neighborhood, whether it's people that get turned around. That's the only alternative I can think of.
Thank you, Marcus.
Be happy to answer your questions.
While he's up here, since he's our city engineer, is any of the council members have a question for Marcus?
Madam President?
I'll burst across.
Yeah, Marcus, thanks. In looking at this, several of the neighbors also expressed concern about other neighbors that do live on the alley and use it for parking access for their houses. Did you happen to look at that?
Yeah, I think, to my best recollection, I met with, you know, both sides of this, and I believe the one-way that was put forward was the way that would provide access to the garages and allow everyone to get in and out.
You're not sure about that?
What's that?
You're not sure about that?
I'm sure somebody here can help with that, but that was, that was what we discussed, and I believe that... discussed, and I believe that provided that.
Okay, thank you, Ayeo.
Which way? One-way, which way? South?
It was gonna be southbound, or it was gonna be northbound.
North?
Northbound.
It was gonna be north.
It was gonna be north.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a, there's a garage on the, the west side, the house that faces the northern street, so they'd enter from the back.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the council have a question for Marcus right now?
My name is Susan Dean, and I live at 2649 Oak Street, and I live on 27th Street and Oak. I have carport on 27th Street that I can only access from the south. I know at one time, I was told that there were three ways that I could get into my carport, and one of them was to turn around and back down 27th Street so I could reach it, or I could go down an alleyway that is parallel to 25th Street on Oak Street and Wilson Street and go that way, and then in the back of our houses is another alley, and I could come up that alley and go to 27th Street to reach my carport. Well, have you ever driven down an alley in the wintertime? I mean, those two ways, to me, were ridiculous, and having to turn around on Oak Street to back down 27th Street to reach my carport doesn't make a lot of sense to me either. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any new, anything new and different to say than what we've already heard? If you do, please come up.
I'm so pleased to have.
Is it new and different?
New and different? This is new and different.
Okay.
Okay. The talk was, I'm Kathy Frakes, 2724 Wilson. The talk was about how people can be coming at each other, and then you have to give and take, as you come and might see somebody coming 27th from one end to the other. Well, the same thing actually happens on Wilson itself, and when there's cars parked on both sides of Wilson, which often are, and you're going down Wilson, you can only have one car at a time. And so you see somebody coming from 25th, and I know we just experienced this the other day, one of us has to go over and back behind another car. And we do this. It's just a natural thing we do. We don't think about it. It's just a courteous thing to do, and I don't know anybody who would just come running at, at us as we're going that way. So it's like a give and take. So that's a whole thing right there about one-way. Are we gonna make Wilson Street a one-way also, because only one car at a time can go through? That's a good question as well, that's been brought up to me, I didn't think of this myself, but this is brought up to me by a few of my neighbors, when we're talking about making 27th one-way. And there's a lot more traffic on Wilson, by the way, than 27th. Thank you.
She didn't write me to get up here.
My name's Jerry Harmon. I live at 2705 Oaks. I live one house away from 27th Street, and we've lived there over twenty-eight years. I never have known there'd been any accident. I want to make you aware that where they talked about the neighbor that had the honeysuckle, I know personally of three times she has worked. One day, six hours, when it was that extreme heat, cutting that honeysuckle way back, and she showed us, and we went over there, you can stand at that intersection, and you can see all the way down to the circle on Wilson Street, so there's no visibility problem. And just like she stated, you know, if you're looking at the greatest risk to a child, that would be Wilson Street, but I don't think you want to close Wilson Street, because you have people that are parking on Wilson, making it extremely narrow at that intersection, and I don't think you would consider that, but that has, you know, that's a, a street that's trafficked a lot more. So I think it just makes sense to leave things the way they are. It's worked for many, many years. Why change it?
Thank you. I think at this time, we'll close public comment on this. Is there any comments from the council? Anyone wish to, Councilperson Elliott?
Mr. Harmon, could you come to the podium, please, with your report?
Yes, sir.
Page six, at the bottom. If I'm following this chart right, and as it relates to the vehicular, vehicle traffic?
Yes.
I see a high per day of maybe seven cars?
Mm-hmm.
A low per day of zero?
So that is figure four showing northbound activity?
I'm sorry. Uh, page six is?
Yes, that's figure, figure four, at the bottom of page six, that's figure four. That's showing the, the northbound activity.
Northbound activity?
Yeah, so it, in blue, there, there's, yeah, kind of two colors of blue, but you've got the driving and the construction, but there's, there's not terribly much construction activity.
So what's the number, average, what's the number of cars northbound on average?
Uh, I'd have to pull my Excel spreadsheet to give you the exact number.
Okay, but I mean, if I, if I followed this graph, am I looking at the right figure here, displays the northbound activities?
That's the northbound activity.
And driving is on the left, the far-left bar?
That's, that's correct, yes.
Okay. I don't see any dark bar higher than seven.
That's correct, for the northbound activity.
For northbound.
Yes, then if you, if you change.
And I see a low of zero on some days.
That's correct.
There's none. I see an average, just trying to get an overall average of about three cars per day.
Yeah, roughly, I mean, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, and then if you change to, to page seven, at the top?
Southbound.
Yeah, you've got figure five. That's gonna show the, the southbound activity that was recorded, and it's significantly higher for, for driving activities.
I see one day where it spiked to about twenty-two on July sixth.
Yes.
I see a low of probably about two on a number of days. My guess is an average of about eight.
Yeah, give or take.
Okay, so we're talking about, on average, eleven cars a day, either direction.
I believe the exact number is anywhere from like twelve to fourteen, roughly, twelve to fourteen different driving activities.
Twelve to fourteen per day?
Yes.
So in a twenty-four-hour period, what's the odds of a car, of one of the three or four cars going northbound, having to stop for one of the ten cars that's going?
Of all the recorded events, so, you know, of the nine hundred and sixty events that I've recorded over the period, I had zero instances where I had opposing traffic, and you had cars that were, that were stopped. The only instances where I did have, you know, concurrent activities were if people were walking their dog, or riding a bicycle, or, you know, walking or anything like that, and there was a, you know, a car that's coming.
But it relates to cars?
Yeah, in terms of just, in terms of just cars, there was no opposing directional activity.
Okay, northbound, extremely low, southbound, a little bit higher.
That's correct, yeah.
Three and ten to twelve.
Yeah, so if you, if you look at the aggregate, you know, cut data over the.
Fifteen cars per day total.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
No, I'm sorry.
Anyone else on the council?
Ayeo, I'm sorry, Ayeo.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council have a question or a comment at this point?
Madam President?
Councilperson Nation.
If there's no further discussion, I move that we vote to take action on General Ordinance Number Three, 2022.
Second.
And a motion made by Councilperson Nation, second by Councilperson Cross, to take action on General Ordinance Three, 2022. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Madam President?
Councilperson Nation.
I vote, I move that we amend General Ordinance Number Three, 2022, as presented.
Is it up to twenty-five mile?
Yes.
Okay.
It's been a motion made by Councilperson Nation, second by Councilperson Oller, to amend General Ordinance Three, 2022, as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Madam President?
Councilperson Nation.
I move that we vote on, that we, I move that we approve General Ordinance Number Three, 2022, as amended.
Second.
It's been a motion made by Councilperson Nation, second by Councilperson Oller, to approve General Ordinance Number Three, 2022, as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Michelle?
Special Ordinance Twenty-Two, 2022, rezoning of property located at 2335 East Margaret Avenue. Area planning gave a favorable with conditions recommendation. Reminder for all of the special ordinances, you must take a vote to take action.
Point of order, can we just take a moment and, and explain what happened to the people in the audience? Can you do that, Madam President?
I can. If, for the ordinance that we just passed, it was amended, General Ordinance Number Three, 2022, to put in a maximum speed limit at twenty-five miles per hour on Wilson Street.
On 27th.
Oh, I'm sorry, on 27th Street, from Wilson to Oak. It would help if I could read it, right? And so we did not do the one-way, but we did do a posted twenty-five miles per hour on 27th from Wilson to Oak. Okay?
So that's what happened. Thank you for your participation.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Now, Michelle. Do you want to give?
No, she just read it.
Did you read it, Michelle?
Do you want to take a break to let them leave?
Take a short break. Let them get out.
You want a break?
I think we should just keep going.
Gordy, can you give us about five minutes? We'll take a break. We'll be back in about, about five minutes.
Let's just give him time to shuffle out.
Let's give him time to shuffle out.
We'll come back from our free recess. Michelle, do you want to read it again since we're just coming back or not?
Okay, thank you. Special Ordinance 22, 2022, rezoning of property located at 2335 East Margaret Avenue. Area planning gave it favorable with conditions recommendation, and you must take a vote to take action.
Is there a petitioner here who would like to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Gordy Bryan, 2651 South Fruit Ridge.
Would you like to say anything regarding this rezoning?
We've spoken to Marcus about parking. I guess that's the only issue is easement that fronts that property. It's not going to be a problem for us.
What are you? Councilperson Aller.
What are you changing the rezoning from to?
Commercial. I don't know, I don't have that sheet. C1, I think.
C1, two C1s, right?
Two is D1, neighborhood commerce. Is anyone in the public that wishes to speak?
Yes, Donald Hyde. It's going to be C1, that means it's commercial. What are you going to build there, sir? Thank you.
We're going to build an office. We're relocating our current office to that space.
Counsel? Does anyone have any questions or comments? Remember, we do need to vote to take action also. Councilperson Aller.
Madam President, there's no further questions. I move that we vote to take action on Special Ordinance 22, 2022 as presented.
Second. A motion made by Councilperson Aller, second by Councilperson Hazar, to approve Special Ordinance 2022, Ordnance 22, 2022. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Madam President?
Councilperson Aller.
If there's no further questions, I move that we approve Special Ordinance 22, 2022 as presented.
Second.
Been a motion made by Councilperson Aller, second by Councilperson Hazar, to approve Special Ordinance 22, 2022.
I just wanted to hear you say it.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Michelle?
Special Ordinance 23, 2022, rezoning of property located at 602 South 7th Street. Area planning gave it favorable with conditions recommendation.
Is there a petitioner here?
Madam President, members of the council, my name is Lou Britton. Can I approach the council to provide you with some?
Shirkan or Martha can help you?
Martha didn't think I could do that.
Now can you get back?
Oh, yeah. If nothing else, I'll just call. You almost didn't. I'll make this up. I underestimated you.
Damaged the table, I think.
Please be careful.
There we go. My name is Lou Britton. I'm representing the petitioner for the rezoning of 602 South 7th, John Gedrick. I want to thank you for the opportunity to discuss this rezoning with you this evening. As was announced, this was unanimously approved by the Area Plan Commission at their meeting last night. Some of you may remember this property as the Ryan Funeral Home, and then later, the Ryan Maddox Funeral Home. Mr. Gedrick purchased the property in 2017 and has been working steadily to restore the property by removing many of the additions that had been made when it was used as a funeral home. The house was originally constructed by Luther Hager, an ice merchant, sometime in the 1870s. Frederick Goldsmith purchased the house in 1907 and made some additions. As a funeral home, the property was considered a legal non-conforming use in an R2 zoning area. The request here is to rezone to R3 for use as a bed and breakfast. Mr. Gedrick plans to operate the property as a bed and breakfast with four rooms in the principal bedroom, four rooms in the principal building, all of them being on the upper floor. Each of them has its own bathroom. There is an apartment in the back which ultimately may be used as a guest room or a manager's residence. The first floor is occupied entirely by common areas, parlors, dining room, kitchen. It's a really beautiful residence, and I have to say, I went through the place a couple of weeks ago with Mr. Gedrick, and he's doing a wonderful job restoring the property. He's replicated woodwork where necessary. You know, we're trying to get a bathroom in. You have to add a new wall here and there maybe for, to get a bathroom in the existing bedrooms, and he's replicated the existing moldings, which are really pretty fancy moldings, and everything is tied together really well. Once restoration is completed, the building will be beautifully restored. Turning to the matters I handed out to you, just, I'm just trying to guide you along with what I'm talking about, but the photograph is a picture of the property pretty much as it sits now. It was taken maybe a week ago. There are still some things that need to be done. He's not nearly done inside. There's a lot of finish work to be done inside, and we need some new doors on the outside. But the amount of work that has taken place is truly remarkable. This, on the second page, the first picture at the top of the page, is a picture of the property when it was a funeral home, pre-renovation by Mr. Gedrick. The next photo, which is kind of an odd one, is an aerial photograph that I included to give you some idea of the demolition work that has taken place to this point. The areas that are showing up in that photograph as white, including this one way over here, have all been removed. They were additions that were created for use as a funeral home, areas for viewing caskets, preparation of corpses, that sort of thing. Those have all been removed. In addition, half of this garage, the north half, has also been removed, leaving an oversized two-car garage there. The next two pictures are aerial photographs of the property. The top one is looking basically to the east, and the bottom one is looking to the south. I want to note a couple of things to you in those photographs. First, over here, you will see a large paved area. That contains about 10 parking spaces. The property would be required to have six for its current purpose. The ordinance doesn't call out specifically bed and breakfast unless you go into the definitions of boarding house, which is what is called out in R3. You go to the definition of boarding house, and it says bed and breakfast. But, and there is a specific requirement for parking for a bed and breakfast, and that is one space per bedroom and two spaces for the residence. So, we would have, we would need four spaces, one for each bedroom, two for the apartment on the back, six spaces. And we clearly got at least 10 over there. In addition, there are two spaces left in the garage that can be used. The other thing I would note to you is this large paved area over here in front of the garage, the plan ultimately is to remove that paving, except for a driveway to the garage, and landscape that area. So, and as you can see from that photograph, this is, this is a really large parcel. I mean, it goes all the way from this residence over at the edge of this photograph, all the way over to this white car down here in the corner of that parking area. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. If I can't, I'm sure John will, and we would ask for you to give a favorable recommendation, favorable vote to this rezoning.
Thank you, Lou. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak?
Yes, my name is Donald Hyde, 1411 Papa Street. This is one of the few times, sir, that I am 110% approved of what you're doing. I think you're saving and restoring an eyesore into a very nice building, and the fact that it's going to be a bed and breakfast surprised me. I thought it was going to be apartments. However, I cannot say, as a citizen of Terre Haute for almost 70 years, that that stop makes Terre Haute look a lot better. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Counsel? Anyone that wants to speak?
Madam President?
Councilperson Nation?
First, I'd just like to compliment John on doing this project. This is an important project for the Fairingtons Grove neighborhood, for the 7th Street corridor. I looked at this building as a potential buyer before John bought it, and I think that just gives me more appreciation for the work that's actually being published. Having said all of that, I would like to move that we vote to take action on Special Ordinance Number 23, 2022.
Second.
It's been a motion made by Councilperson Nation, second by Councilperson Crossen, to take action on Special Ordinance 23, 2022. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Madam President?
Councilperson Nation?
I move for approval of Special Ordinance Number 23, 2022.
Second.
It's been a motion made by Councilperson Nation, second by Councilperson Crossen, to approve Special Ordinance 23, 2022. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you, Lou.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Lou.
Next item on the agenda, Michelle?
Special Ordinance 24, 2022, rezoning of property located at 3000 Cinderwood Avenue. Area planning gave it favorable recommendation.
Is there a petitioner here who would like to speak on this?
Yes, my name is Randall Kidd. I'm at 815 Maple. The reason I'd like to have it rezoned is so that I can sell it.
Councilperson, just a reminder, this is one of the parcels that was rezoned as industrial.
This is out in my area, out east, where we've had several of those homes, so. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak? Counsel? Madam President? Councilperson Crossen?
Yeah, I drove by there today and even went back by to make sure I was looking at the right place, and I was shocked that it, first of all, it always catches your eye when you have a commercial, a request to rezone from commercial to residential as opposed to the other way around, so that always catches somebody's eye. And, so I went by there, and I was shocked to know that it had ever been heavy industrial. And so, you're saying that you want to sell it as a residential piece, makes sense where it's sitting, so I appreciate that, and I yield.
Again, as a note to the council, I'm working with the city attorney to try to correct some of those areas because the realtors are calling, and most of them can't either get a mortgage on it or get the insurance because we have them zoned out. And from what I understand, from years ago, because of what was out there, they had to give a buffer, and then there were houses built, so.
Because I think some of it had to do with the railroad out there. Yeah, I'm sure there were good reasons at the time, but it was just a surprise. At the time, yeah. Madam President, if there are no further questions, or counsel, I move that we vote to vote on Special Ordinance 24, 2022.
Second.
It's been a motion made by Councilperson Crossen, second by Councilperson Aller, to take action on Special Ordinance 24, 2022. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam President, if there's no further comment, I would move that we approve Special Ordinance 24, 2022.
Second.
It's been a motion made by Councilperson Crossen, second by Councilperson Aller, to approve Special Ordinance 24, 2022. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Michelle?
Special Ordinance 25, 2022, rezoning of property located at 1930 South Sinister Street. Area planning gave it favorable with conditions recommendation, and you have a proposed amendment in front of you.
Is there a petitioner present?
Good evening, Madam President, all members of the council. My name is Richard Shagley. I'm the attorney of right, Shagley Lowry. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of the petitioner, Crime Investments LLC. We were here tonight to rezone the property at 1930 South Sinister Street from R1, single plan to R1 plan development. So, a little history. Unfortunately, Tammy can't be here tonight. She was at the area plan meeting last night, so she heard the full deal. The staff report from the area plan office had given an unfailable recommendation based upon a report from the city engineer with regard to parking. Through a rather long discussion last night, and we did have members of the public that were there with concerns regarding the parking. And I think I could probably take some blame on this. The site plan presented didn't copy well and didn't show the parking in the back of the home. There's a garage that they could use for two spots, but they're also going to clear out area and probably take down the garage for ample parking for the facility. The facility is going to be a Botox center. And centers makes it seem too big. It's a clinic where there'll be two people working at most at once. It's not open every day, it's not open all day, it's mostly by appointment. So, the beauty about that is, it's not going to create a huge traffic issue in the area, nor is it going to create a parking issue because on the busiest time, they're going to need probably four spots, and they're going to have six to eight in back, plus in a weird situation that there is some street parking. But for over 99% of the time, they'll have ample parking on site. And the other issue that was created by the ordinance that was presented and why it's amended is, we had that nearly standard language about the setbacks and about the parking variances. During the discussion last night, it was asked, could we take that out? And the petitioner agreed we could take out the variance on the Wall Street parking, or the parking in general, and that then led to a positive recommendation with the amendment from the Area Plan Commission. Through the discussions with, there were two or, there were three people there last evening that were neighbors, two of them spoke, both centered around the parking scenario. By the end of the night, they were, they were accepting of the project, and they had no objection to this going into their neighborhood. Really, the conversation went from parking to how to manage some invasive honeysuckle in the area. So, they're already working as a neighborhood and trying to conquer the honeysuckle issue in that area. So, I thought it was a good evening. I was a little concerned at first, obviously, by the staff report, but after the discussion with the neighbors, and they're feeling good about it, the Area Plan Commission obviously felt good about it because it was unanimous recommendation to you this evening that this be rezoned from R1 to R1 plan development with the amendment of the parking. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. And I must say, I do like having all this space to lay stuff out. I do kind of miss the podium, but.
Don't get used to it. Everyone's got our podium.
Is that on Minchell?
What's that?
Is that Minchell?
Yeah. And the other thing about this type of facility, and obviously the benefits of the plan development, if it no longer becomes that, it looks back to R1, but, you know, there's no nights, there's no walk-in traffic. This isn't a walk, oh, I think I'll get Botox today. This is a destination spot. This, it's, I'm just, and again, the limited hours, and I fault it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Mr. Hyde wants Botox.
Donald Hyde, 1411 Papa Street. Sir, you have given the least amount of information that anybody's given tonight about what you're doing. I want to know what, you're opening up a business or clinic? What does a clinic do, meaning who does it serve, and how many people does it serve? You're talking about parking as a problem. I happen to know where you're building this place is in one of the biggest, largest?
Mr. Hyde, yeah, I think he said it was a Botox, a Botox clinic.
What's that?
Injections. Facial.
For instance, he said that in Florida. A little Botox.
And that's what this is going to be?
I guess a little bit there. And that's what this is. Also, people use this for minor headaches.
Somebody needs to record. Somebody needs to record. There at one time. Okay, I stand, that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you for your interest, Mr. Hyde. Anyone else in the public wish to speak? If not, anyone on the council have any questions or comments?
Madam President?
Counselperson Aller?
If there's no further questions, I move that we vote to take action on general ordinance 25, 2022.
Second.
It's been a motion made by counselperson Aller, second by counselperson Azar, to take action on special ordinance 25, 2022. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no.
No. No.
I got you.
Thank you.
That means we can't vote on it tonight.
It will go to the first meeting in October.
I would note, for what it's worth, that the staff report from our city engineer said that this is a bad idea because of parking and impact on the neighborhood. I would encourage all of the council members, if you haven't gone and looked at this, to please look at it, and please look at the area around it, and ask yourself if the business belongs there. I yield. See you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you, just to clarify, this will go to October.
Do we have any other meetings this month?
October meeting.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next item on the agenda, Michelle?
Special Ordinance 26, 2022, rezoning a property located at 1242 North 13th Street. Area planning gave a favorable recommendation.
Is there a petitioner that would like to speak on this?
Hello, I'm Michelle Tucker with Malone Realty. We have this property listed for sale. We have a buyer that ran into a roadblock with the zoning because the lender will not do the loan and we can't move forward with it being zoned M1. We need it to be residential to move forward on this.
Is there anyone in the public wishes to speak on this?
Donald Hyde, one real quick question, ma'am. Do you plan on living, having this as a residence where somebody lives, or is it some other thing going to be there?
It's currently a single-family dwelling that's going to continue to be used as a single-family dwelling, so it's going to be owner occupied.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel, anyone have any questions or comments?
Michelle, do you own the property?
No, I do not. I'm representing the elders who live in West Virginia, who have a family home that's been in their family since 1950, who are older now, who have passed away, and who now live locally in the city of Washington.
Were you at area planning last night?
Yes, I was.
Any resistance?
Anyone else on the council?
President, let him know, just, this is another one of those situations where they did a whole block.
They did the block on.
Madam President?
Yeah, I went up there today and I had the same kind of comment that I made before you, we'll just take a second look at this, and again, another area of town that used to be highly industrialized and is no longer in that situation, and these homes were done as a buffer, I think, and, and so I understand, but you can clearly see that this piece of property is a single-family residence. I yield.
Madam President?
Counselperson Garrison?
I move that we vote on special ordinance 26, 2022 on its first reading.
Second.
Thank you. It's been a motion made by counselperson Garrison, second by counselperson Crossen, to take action on special ordinance 26, 2022. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Madam President, I move for approval of special ordinance 26, 2022.
Second.
It's been a motion made by counselperson Garrison, second by counselperson Crossen, to approve special ordinance 26, 2022. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. I see, I don't believe we have any resolutions, Michelle?
Do you have anything to bring up?
Yeah, I will, I didn't know if you had any resolutions or anything, I don't see any. Okay. Just a reminder, we do have special meetings scheduled for next Monday and Tuesday at 5:30. It's for discussion of the 2023 budget between the mayor, the comptroller, and the council. Tuesday is only if we need it. Counselperson DeBon, there. With that reminder, could entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second. It's been a motion made by counselperson Azar, second by counselperson DeBon to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no. Any interference?
I need to turn. Is your favorite?